Good evening and welcome to the Southern School Committee meeting of Tuesday, March 27, 2012. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Jan R M two, Public Input. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the school committee? Come right up to your microphone.
I guess this is a good time for me to come up.
Could you just state your name so they can put it on the record?
Yeah, Charlene Cludier. I'm an art teacher at West Street School. And I have a copy of this if you'd like to take one and pass it down. All right. This is a proposal. We currently, we recently had a meeting with superintendent about the scheduling for next year for the special area teachers. The way the reconfiguration is right now creates a major scheduling problem because the schedules are based around the special area teachers. And what happens is Eastford Road is basically split in half. So it has half the number of classes as the other buildings which creates people moving around. So I'll just read this and you can let me know if you have any questions. And it's a proposal to keep Eastford Road just K and one. Eastford Road would be kept intact with all the K and one classes, including the probably three transitional first grade classes. The classrooms would not have to move. The library could be kept intact at a K one level. Librarians specializes at the K one level which is especially important because the students are learning to read. All the grade one teachers would stay in one building so there would be an opportunity for the transitional grade one teachers to meet with regular grade one teachers in order to better prepare their students for grade one. This would save money. Eastford Road would not have to move their classrooms over the summer. Other schools Charlton Street and West Street would have grades two through five. This could allow for a four day schedule rotation as the daily schedules are based around the four special area classes. Special area teachers would not have to move from building to building. My question, is there enough space at Eastford Road for all of the kindergarten plus grade one plus three transitional classes if there are three? Is there enough room there?
Well, listen, our job in Public Input is to listen to you make your proposal, then we take it under advisement.
All right, so you can read through it after anyway and think about it. And my other question, is there any reason that the current plan for Eastford Road needs to be just kindergarten plus the transitional grade one? And the reason for the request of reconsidering the grade levels at Eastford Road is that the current plan for the reconfiguration creates an uneven number of classes at the three schools with only approximately 12 classes at Eastford Road and approximately 24 classes at the other schools. The daily school schedules are based around the special area classes. This creates a major scheduling problem with the special area teachers causing them to move from building to building to compensate for a shortage of classes at Eastford Road. The current plan would force special area teachers to go to other schools. There could be a space problem if specials need to be taught at the same time. Extra rooms could be needed. And the fact that students would possibly have a different special area teacher split between grade levels. It's to the advantage of the students to have one special area teacher to work with them during their time at one building and move with them through all the levels and get to know the students and their individual needs. This is definitely a strong point in having multiple levels of students in a building and it's to the students' advantage. The current plan creates extreme problems in terms of scheduling the students' classes evenly on a day-to-day basis. We need to keep the special areas intact in their buildings so the entire K one school could focus on the needs of K one students and the other two buildings could focus on grades two through five. This allows for special area teachers to be invested in their home buildings and allows opportunity for them to strengthen their programs by being familiar with the students and working with the same students for four years at Charlton Street and West Street. Please consider keeping Eastford Road K one. It would be to the advantage of the students at the early levels. They would get to stay in one building for two years so they could settle in before moving on. Transitional students can be included in grade one activities and be comfortable in their building instead of being the only ones who don't move forward into the next building. Regular K one students would be able to spend two years in one building before having to transition. Thank you for your time. I hope you will consider this plan. I think it's beneficial to the students in many ways.
Thank you, Mrs. Cludier.
Okay, thank you.
What we'll do is we'll refer to Superintendent to make comments and report back to the school committee about what the concerns are because the reconfiguration will be a regular topic at all our meetings going forward until we complete the plan. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cludier. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the school committee?
I believe I'd like to introduce Mr. Bishop. I know he has a group of students here that are, need to be honored this evening.
Good evening. As our winter sports season has wound down, we had a couple of basketball teams that made it into the district playoff for the first time in many years. Both our varsity boys and girls teams had a very, very exciting season. We traveled to Worcester for many games and it was a very good season. But we often don't give some of our other teams enough acknowledgement. This evening I've invited to join me Ms. Laura Rotondo who is the coach of our mathletes, our math team. So if I could ask Ms. Rotondo and the students to come up, I think she's got some information to share with the community as a whole.
These are some of the students who participated this year on the varsity math team in the Worcester County Math League or it's known commonly as WACAMAL. And we do four meets a year. I'm the coach of the varsity team. We also have a freshman team, but this year we had quite an extraordinary year. The students this year, we had one meet where we brought over 20 students which is quite remarkable. Usually we bring between, I would say, four and 10. And there was quite a lot of enthusiasm. The students supported each other, helped each other, wanted to learn new things. And I'm very proud to tell you that they came in first this year in our division in the math league. There were six teams in our division. University Park, Assabett Valley, Douglas, Notre Dame, and Lester. And we came in number one this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rotondo, could you just, for the public, introduce all the students and maybe what grade they're in?
Okay.
For the public. I can do the name and you do what grade you're in. This is Trey Salse.
I'm a junior.
This is Lucas Saint Germain.
I'm a sophomore.
Autumn Harvard.
I'm a senior.
John Jovan.
I'm a senior.
Samantha Bernard.
I'm a senior.
Donovan Olivo.
I'm a junior.
Casey Mitchell.
I'm a sophomore.
And Kelsey Aponte.
Okay, thank you.
Lots of underclassmen.
Yep. Well, I'd like to, on behalf of the school committee, congratulate you, students, for representing the district well. We're very proud of you. It's great to have those accomplishments out there and to recognize you in front of the town so that they can see the great things that have been ongoing in the school. It's nice to see some underclassmen as well. Continue that hard work. Mrs. Rotondo, congratulations and good luck and thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to address the school committee? Anyone else? One more call? Seeing none? Approval of minutes? I mean, I'm sorry, call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. De Gregorio?
Present.
Dr. D'Amico?
Present.
Mr. Jovan?
Present.
Mr. Lozo?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Principe?
Present.
Mrs. Woodrow?
Present.
Seven present.
All members present. Approval of minutes, a regular school committee meeting of March 13, 2012. Is there a motion?
No.
Okay, any errors, corrections, or remissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? The unanimous vote, all present. Representative, report, report of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Helena Benoit. Good evening, Helena. Go ahead. Now.
I'd first start off with a positive note. The show choir this year has, as a first-year group, at each competition has moved up. We received first place in the varsity division at our last competition for our high school. And this weekend we will be competing at state finals and hope to receive first place again. The chorus had a Disney dinner and had a great outcome for both the high school and middle school chorus. Softball and baseball teams will be heading to the Cape this weekend for a small tournament. Seniors are working hard on scholarships since all their college acceptances are in. MCAS started at the high school. And student advisory elections will be tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Now moving on to presentation, our first presentation this evening. I'll turn that over to Ms. Eva.
Yep, I'd like to introduce the principal of Charlton Street School, Bryant Montigny, to introduce his guest from SHOT North America.
Good evening, Mr. Montigny.
Good evening, Mr. Jovan, members of the committee, Mr. Reely. We are very excited and thrilled about our partnership with SHOT North America, a leader in glass imaging and fiber optics with facilities throughout the world. They have, I believe, 17,500 employees. Tonight, we started this partnership last May through contacts with their care team, outreach into the community, and many activities have occurred and many fine activities. And I'm pleased tonight introduce some members from SHOT. With me, Marcus Carnovo, the CEO of SHOT. Keri Heibacher, an optical engineer, and Vanessa Roney, a sales associate. And it's funny when we have all these high-tech people and then, last but not least, Kathleen Catteratt, our reading teacher. So, Marcus?
Yeah, just some words from my side. First of all, I'm not the CEO of SHOT, not now, because SHOT's a global corporation. I'm the vice president here for our facility in Southbridge or for our North American business for that business unit. And thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present what we do together with the Charlton Street High School. As you may hear, I'm not out of this area, so I'm from Germany. I was basically assigned to that position last year in summer. And to give you some background, back in Germany, where was my last position, I was the vice president for corporate strategy and development for SHOT overall, global, for all the 17,000 people. And I was part of the team that basically developed our new mission statement. And it's very hard to give a vision statement for people all over the world, right? That can, where people can identify with that statement. And this statement is, we make SHOT part of everyone's life. First of all, that means, of course, we want to sell our products to everybody who's possible, right? But the most or more important thing is also that we take it very serious to be part of the communities where our facilities are and basically contribute back to the communities because normally we benefit from the areas where we are with high skilled employees and so on and forth and also the towns, whatever enables us to do good business. And making SHOT part of everyone's life means for us also giving things back. And that basically, this care program here fits perfectly into that. And the nice thing about that is it's not directed from top to bottom. It's basically something the employees come up on their own. So that's their idea. They basically, they do it in their, in their spare time. It's not like that, that we say, okay, you have to do it within your working house. And that's really the amazing part of it. And if it starts small, basically, you can see how it spreads out all over the organization. I hope that Vanessa and Keri can give you some overview what we have already achieved in, I think now, approximately one year of that cooperation.
Keri, Vanessa? They have a PowerPoint presentation they put together? This is really amazing. This really is. I went over to visit SHOT and saw this.
Okay, great. Thank you again for having us. I'm Vanessa and this is Keri. We just-
Can you just speak, get him to move the mic a little bit because it's kind of hard to hear from you.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. As Marcus mentioned, we're part of the care team at SHOT. Just so you know, we do have our own mission statement. You know, really what CARE stands for is an acronym for Community Awareness for Responsible It really started quite simply because a group of SHOT employees from both the business units wanted to have an impact within the community, a positive impact. We see our presence there. And we basically got together and brainstormed ideas on ways that we could get more involved. And Keri mentioned quite simply, you know, she goes for walks. You know, at lunch, why not contact Charlton Street School? So we did. And-
So after one of our meetings, we had brought up, well, let's, let's give Charlton Street School a call and see if there's any way that we can work together and get some ideas of how we can help each other. So we called Bryant and we're pleased with how happy he was that we called and how open he was to have us come visit. So this is really, so this, this is some of what we received on our first visit back in March. Our own Peace Builders praise note that we thought after our first visit and some of the stickers.
So actually, one of the ideas that Kathleen had during the meeting was how about, you know, buddy reading program?
Use that other microphone, I think. Thank you.
We'll get it.
Yeah, it's not you, believe me. We have problems with a microphone all the time.
So basically, we, Kathleen, again, came up with an idea, why not, you know, work with the students and, you know, read with them because to promote literacy and it goes in line with, with the school objectives. We don't want to come in and disrupt the daily environment. We want to add to it. So we started and worked, you know, feverishly really with Kathleen and Bryant, going back and forth with this brochure just so we can make sure to get the details down and, and learn what we had to do in order to be, you know, more involved there. So this is actually the final brochure that we have and Kathleen has copies for all of you. So you can see, you know, more or less that we hit on every topic for SHOT as well as for Charlton Street.
This, this brochure was distributed to SHOT employees to get interest in the program.
So actually, you'll see here that in May, after we had come up with the brochure and after we had talked more about having a partnership, we wanted to formally, you know, meet everybody at SHOT, at Charlton Street that was helping us make this happen. And so we invited them for a visit and Keri actually gave them all a tour. We think everybody had a great time. And you'll see here that our entire care team is actually in this picture. So it's a pretty diverse group from within both business units ranging from, you know, an optical engineer to a cost analysis to human resource director and marketing. We really have every piece of the pie here.
So this is one of our first projects that we had before buddy reading when we were still getting interest built in that. SHOT, we had a drive for local troops to send care packages to the troops. And we had asked Bryant if they would be interested in helping us with this. They also opened up donations. The students brought donations in for the troops. And they also made cards, art cards, for us to send with the care packages. Here's the result of the donation drive. So these packages on the left are donations from both Charlton Street School and SHOT. And on the right are all of the, the cards that the children made for us to send with the packages.
Additionally, too, when, you'll see that they're, all the cards are displayed. When, you know, Kathleen and Bryant gave us these cards, we were so excited to actually go through them and everything that, you know, and share actually everything that the kids had offered. So we actually displayed this in the conference room at SHOT and openly invited all the employees to come and take a look. And we had it out for, I believe, four hours in the afternoon so people could just walk by at their leisure and sort of go through the cards. It was also, you know, it was nice for them and, and it really opened the eyes of our employees to see that, you know, we are doing something. And it's, you know, we're receiving, you know, partnership from, you know, Charlton Street School on things that we want to do. So it actually made a lot more people want to get involved within the buddy reading program and some of our other activities. Last year, we actually sponsored the spelling bee. And you'll notice, we're in there too, we're able to attend that. And that was, that was a very amazing experience for us. And we're actually sponsoring the spelling bee as well this year and we'd like to continue to do so.
Towards the end of the year, we know there are several events at the school, so this is another one of the wrap-up events. We were invited to attend Flag Day. And in the meantime, we were trying to still build awareness of our group within SHOT. So we decided as a, as a team that it would be good to start our own little newsletter of the care team and what we've been up to. So this is our first newsletter mainly focusing on Charlton Street School and the initial visit, the care packages. And once again, trying to get more people involved in what would be starting the next school year, the buddy reading program.
So as you know, the school has summers off and we don't. So we wanted to continue and make sure that we kept things going during the school vacation within SHOT. So we thought, you know, we'd have a school supply drive. And actually, we did this within the two months of summer vacation. And we had boxes in the lunchrooms and also you could give donations to any care representative. And this was our total contribution that we actually brought to the school in September. Presented Bryant and Kathleen with these and we actually have our maintenance crew helping us out. So, you know, it's not just us. If we need help or assistance, then the rest of our colleagues definitely want to be involved. And they were excited to go there and be a part of that. And then we were elated to have in our inbox a picture where there's clearly some effort put forth on Kathleen and Bryant's part to thank us. And we actually included this picture in our newsletter and, you know, it's just amazing to see the kids and just how thankful everybody was for our contribution, which was easy because we just talk about it, we're enthusiastic about it, and the entire care team. And now other SHOT employees are really wanting to get involved and be a part of this, so.
And in September, when the buddy reading program was just beginning, we had actually made the local news. Here's our article in the Southbridge Evening News. And as of today, when we wrote this presentation, it was 138 visits. I believe now we are at 145 visits of SHOT employees going to the school to read. So yes, we're, we're very excited about this.
Maybe ask Kathleen to come up and, and talk about some of the interactions with the buddy reading program. So Kathleen?
Good evening. A few of the next slides represent our buddy reading initiative. You do have the brochure that was created to inform potential volunteers about the program. Interested employees were invited to the school for a meeting where we discussed the value and impact that their time would have on our students in relation to reading skills. In addition, they received a brief training on how to read aloud and discuss books with students. I modeled some guided reading strategies with them so that they would feel comfortable with a small group of students. So far, we have over 140 visits where all third graders and most second graders have had at least an experience with a buddy reader. So we're really happy to have them and they have created a really nice rapport with the staff and the students. They know they're SHOT buddies, they know they're coming, they look forward to that special time that they have for reading and discussion with our SHOT buddies.
So actually, this is, you know, one of kind of the, the spawn-offs of our partnership. Paulette Honorado, she works for SHOT, she was a buddy reader, or she is a buddy reader, I should say. And she was able to donate 1,000 books. It was actually an organization that she's part of that donated them. But she actually approached Keri and I and asked, you know, could Charlton Street use these books? And it's really just simply because the word got out and it's, they received, you know, over 1,000 books. From what I understand, I believe the kids went home with books. Yeah, so it was like little gifts and they had created this postcard on here, or bookmark, I should say, that went in all of the books. So not only would the kids know and, you know, see the SHOT, oh, but the parents would start to maybe realize that SHOT is wanting to be involved and help them grow. And then, of course, the Southbridge Evening News, I shouldn't say of course, but the Southbridge Evening News, they reported on the book donation, which was wonderful. And then you'll see the picture with the donated by SHOT and the kids sort of going through the books.
And within SHOT, we also made our own local news. This is a, the Insight Magazine, which is distributed to all the SHOT employees in North America. And the care team in our partnership made this article. Towards the end of the year, we were invited to the winter concert. Several SHOT employees, the buddy readers and some of the care team members attended their winter concert. We were invited. We were also given several holiday cards that were made by the students. And Vanessa and I displayed them once again in both break rooms at SHOT so the employees could come and look at the cards and see a lot of the work that the students had done.
And then, of course, in January 2012, we had our second visit where we presented Charlton Street School and visitors, you know, with this banner that we could proudly, you know, put up, you know, at any event. I hear it's been in the front office at Charlton Street School a lot. We also presented them with a poster, a framed poster that is in the foyer. So we're really excited to see that put to good use. And we also presented them with a check at that time, as you all know, as you approved for the, for the spelling bee for this year, which we're looking forward to attend. And, and you know, really, we've only just begun. You know, we have numerous other programs that were already started such as Box Tops for Education. We have a magician apprentice program that's actually another spawn-off of buddy reader, Paul Kafeng, who's actually has a curriculum to, to teach the students, you know, various approved concepts. And then we have Postcards from Around the World Program where we're actually sponsoring it internally, putting it on our internal internet, so it's the intranet. And people from around the world within SHOT are sending postcards to Charlton Street School. And they actually have that right in the, in the hallway when you take a right out of the office, the main office. And it's a whole board and there's a map. And it's actually quite amazing to see what they've done. They're actually pinpointing. I'm not sure if one of you guys want to talk more about that program or... You'll have to see it. It's, you know, from what I hear, they've received like a handful of cards and the kids love it and we love it, so. Really, thank you. Would you like to add anything else?
Yeah, I'll add one quick thing. I just, our very first slide where I showed the stickers and the card from the school, it'll be a year in two days that we made that very first visit and we've already accomplished so much. And so we think we're, it's only going to be great things from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? I'd just lay on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to thank you for the partnership that you've developed with the, uh, school district. It's, it's great and, uh, it's something that's sorely needed nowadays. I mean, schools, communities can't do it alone and they need that partnership with anybody that we can partner with. It really is about developing those, uh, bonds with the employees, employees and building that community. So we thank you for taking that first step into our buildings and reaching out to us and knowing Mr. Montigny and the partnerships that he has developed throughout the, uh, community with different groups. I'm sure it wasn't even any second thought that he would welcome you into the building and hopefully we can develop that throughout the town as well with other groups and that you can be a model for those other corporations and, and groups in the town to, to come forward and participate with the kids. I just think it's phenomenal and thank you and we look forward to a long partnership with SHOT. So thank you. I'd also like to thank you but, and tell you that you have challenged other companies in town and, uh, two companies have formed a partnership with Eastford Road School already. And, uh, I know that West Street School is in a, in a, uh, discussions about with one of the local banks, uh, to possibly perform partnerships. So you have been an inspiration to other schools and other community, uh, businesses, which is really, really a testament to the, the work that you've done. And Carrie, I know you graduated from Ohio State, so, you know, congratulations on their win last week.
Thank you very much for being here. We look forward, um, another year from now, coming out with, uh, another presentation and all the great things that you do. So thank you for being here. Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation this evening is, uh, I had asked that this be put on the agenda, uh, to have Mr. Bishop come and just, uh, give us whatever he could on, uh, graduation dropout rates. And the reason for that was that we had a great presentation last week, uh, last evening from the, from the three students that had come before us. And, uh, they had, they had presented a number of an 18% dropout rate. And this was not the first time that I had heard in the community and it concerned me that whatever information is out there, that we actually put out accurate numbers and what strategies we may employ as a school district to, um, combat those problems. So with that, I, I asked Mr. Bishop just to be here to talk about graduation and dropout rates and what information he may be able to provide to the community and the school committee. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Jovan. I'm just having a little difficulty getting this to, uh, zoom in. Thank you, Dr. Dovinko. Uh, before I go into my presentation, I was, uh, listening to, uh, uh, school rep Helena Benoit this evening and she left off a little tidbit I think she might want to share with everybody. Last Monday evening, I had the opportunity to go to the public house and Helena was honored by the Tri-Community Exchange Club. She received an award. It's called the ACE Award and it's, uh, an acronym for Accepting the Challenge of Excellence. Four students from our four neighboring high schools were all there, one from Southbridge and three neighboring high schools. Helena received this award for her, uh, commitment to excellence in light of some of the challenges she faces on a daily basis. So Helena was a little bashful in pointing that out, but I will point it out tonight for her. So congratulations to Helena. As, as Mr. Jovan said, last, uh, two weeks ago, I couldn't be with you. I traveled down to Cheshire High School Tuesday evening with Mr. McHugh as part of the, uh, Media Educators Conference that was held at Quinnipiac College the following day. But the prior evening, we were invited to tour Cheshire High School's brand new media, uh, production center. As you know, we're building a new high school. We had some questions, what, what did that, we want ours to look like. So they had an open house as part of this, uh, conference Tuesday evening from six to eight PM. So the timing was, uh, not conducive to my being here with the students last week. However, we did follow up, uh, Monday, uh, this past Monday, uh, eight days ago, Joe, Mr. Jovan and I met with the three young ladies and we, we listened to some of their things and, uh, we wanted to, uh, I asked them for some, uh, data and they're, they're working and getting that. But I wanted to, first of all, talk about the dropout rate. As far as I'm concerned, one student dropping out of school is too many and, uh, it's a chronic problem, not only in Southbridge, but statewide. Uh, as a result of that recognition, Massachusetts in the fall of 2010, the Department of Education, the US Department of Education selected Massachusetts as just one of two states for the Federal High School Graduation Initiative Award and one of 29 projects total nationwide chosen for funding out of 184 total applicants. The Massachusetts Grant Project, as it's called MasGrad, will focus on the 133 high schools throughout the state that exceed the statewide annual dropout rate of 2.9% in 2008, 2009 school year. Massachusetts will receive $15 million over the next five years through this MasGrad project to support the statewide and local effort for high school dropout prevention, intervention and recovery. Uh, I've been in education, this is my 34th year, 32 years in Southbridge. When I started, the, the Commonwealth had districts placed in kind of KOCs, kind of communities. That stopped, not sure if it stopped with the Ed Reform Act of 93O and No Child Left Behind, but all of a sudden it was, one brush was painting everybody. And, uh, with that being said, I'm... They finally took all of the districts, 76 school districts representing 133 schools statewide. These are all the schools that exceeded the 2.9% dropout rate in 2008, 2009. That's how many there were. Those schools represented 30, uh, 74% of the total dropouts in the Commonwealth. Three quarters of the dropouts came from that number of schools. They took an initiative to let's see what we can do to help those schools, of which we are one. They went back to 2008. They looked at the graduation rates, four and five years. The average state in 2008, the average state graduation rate was 81.2 and five years 88.4. However, this cohort was significantly lower. The four-year was 69, uh, 66.9 and the five-year 72.4, as you can see. Similarly, in 89, significantly behind, 2010 and 2011. Where does Southbridge stack up with that cohort? In 2008, we were slightly behind, 2% behind the cohort, not the state average. 2009, we were 57.5. What happened? That's the end result of what took place in our district four years prior, when we had a significant cash shortfall, followed by a reduction in 60 teachers. That was your end result. It took us four years to get there, but we got there. Following year, we retrieved a little bit, up to 61.3, still 6% behind, 6% behind the MasGrad cohort, significantly behind the state. Finally, this past school year, we got to where the MasGrad cohort is, 69%. Not great, but we are level with the type of district that we are in a cohort with. Let's talk about dropout rates. There's a difference, as I pointed out last year, between the dropout rate and the graduation rate. Dropout rates, they went back to 2008, 2009. 8,500 students in the Commonwealth dropped out of school that year. 10 years of that would reflect 85,000 people, young people, prime breadwinners without high school diplomas. The state recognizes that and they have jumped onto this, this MasGrad to try to correct this. So while the state average was 2.9, our cohort was 6.3. Then they dropped to 6.0 and finally, in the past school year, the average for the cohort was 5.8. Where do we stack up with the cohort? Well, in 08, 09, we were lower. In 9, 10, we were lower. And this past year, we were lower. When you look at Southbridge High, last year's dropout rate was 5.5%. I will take that to the bank. I will take that to my grave. That's a fact. That comes from the Department of Education. We don't make these numbers up in my office. We don't count these people ourselves. The, every student in the state has a SACID number and the state's getting real good. And they're tracking children now even beyond graduation to see what happens after they leave the schools. So they're tracking. Uh, that 5.5 represents 24 students that left our high school in the 010, 11 school year. Of those, 24 students, five disappeared over the summer, left in June, did not return in September. We have no idea. Of the 24, 12 of those students were students that came through our district. 12 were people who transferred in. I had one, one instance, uh, the first week of school, I had four students come in from a social service agency in Newton. Two days later, one of those girls ran away and has not been tracked. Uh, another one was transferred to Brockton, but never registered in Brockton. So we take that as a dropout. So these are some of the challenges that we face. Five-year graduation rate, once again, if you look down, you'll see many of our students, particularly that bottom line, we have many LEP students. We are 5% points higher than the four-year average. We have about 6% of our kids taking that extra, that fifth year to get through high school. And that's fine. I'd rather have them take that fifth year and get a high school diploma because it opens their door to a much better life. All right, so what does that all mean? What, what is MasGrad doing for Southbridge High School? What are they doing? Well, they're bringing these schools together in work groups, study groups, and we're looking at best practices. What is, what is, let's say Springfield Science and Technology High School doing? Well, one of the things we looked at with them that, that I have an eye on, they have an, an interesting attendance buyback because without question, the correlation between attendance and academic success is there. I think we could argue that for not one second. If you're not in our schools, we can't teach you. It's an interesting program. Uh, three hours after school buys back an absence. Something we are going to look at. Also a credit recovery lab. Uh, Mr. Ely and I and Mr. Zangy traveled up to Worcester in the fall to look at an interesting program where they have just that in an Ohio school where to ask kids to do credit recovery on computer alone, those are not the youngsters that are going to have the, the, the determination to sit there and, and plug through alone. They need somebody to sit and help them and be with them and work with them. So these are some of the ideas that Springfield is using. Uh, Somerville is using an online math credit recovery. But I, I think the one that I liked a little bit, and we really want to look at this one with our new middle high school coming online. Attleboro High School has an, has an innovative school within a school community for ninth graders at risk that begins with a summer transition program focusing on the preparation for high school as they go from eight to nine. I think with the air-conditioned building we have, brand-new facility, I think that's a, it's an opportunity that we should not miss as, as just one more tool we need to use to keep kids in school and give them the best possible chance at that high school diploma. I don't think there's any doubt the financial benefit to a high school diploma, the, the financial benefit to a college diploma. These are real facts. So these are some of the initiatives that we're looking at. We'll also be working with MasGrad. They have a pretty good, uh, webinar series, the one we're looking at of Great Emphasis, June 7th, where they have a webinar on parent engagement. I want to hear what other districts are doing to get parents in. As you know, at the high school level, all high schools, it's difficult to get parents in and I, it's really difficult at the, at Southbridge High to get parents involved. And the other thing the state is recognizing finally, and I talked to Senator Moore last Monday night up at the public house about this, they, legislature is on the cusp of raising the dropout rate to 18. That's, I believe, that's probably going to be a, a truism come our next school year. So, uh, the, these are exciting things. I think these are things that will help our students and our community. That's why I just wanted to clear up any misconceptions about what the dropout rate and the graduation rates are at Southbridge High School. Is there any questions I can answer?
Questions, comments? Mary Ellen, I'm Mr. Principay and then Dr. Dovinko.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I was, I'm a little confused when I read this. Um, the cover page is, talks about the US Department of Education granting a $5 million, actually a grant from the federal government to the state in the fall of 2010. And that is called MasGrad. What I, having a little trouble trying to follow is the PowerPoint where you're comparing MasGrad in 2008, when it seems like it didn't come into place
Right.
until the end of 2010.
They went back and to establish data, they deliberately went back to 2008, 2009. And I believe that's where they really changed the formula for, for the dropout. I, I think that they, for the first time, considered students who earned a GED as non-dropouts. So I think that's the rationale for going back to 2008. Why they didn't go back further, I don't know.
Even though MasGrad is something new?
Something new. They, they needed, they, they needed a, uh, a starting point.
Do we have a grant? Have we applied for a grant to receive money for initiatives for us to use in our school district?
From this program, no. They have not, uh, opened grants up for us at this point. They are using the money statewide to help. To the best of my knowledge, I have not seen any MasGrad grants.
You haven't seen any grants?
From MasGrad, no. They may be out there.
Out of the, out of the $15 million that Massachusetts received from the state...
I would have to check that and I would certainly get that information for you.
Okay, that would be good. Somebody else can ask a good question.
Dr. Dovinko?
Yeah, so, so what, what you're saying is that the state received the federal money?
Right.
And state is using as, as a resource
Right, and I think, I think they may be...
to develop plans and may not be funding individual initiatives for individual schools. Is that...
They may very well be doing that.
Yeah, but they might be, yeah.
As I say, this, this is a relatively new program.
Yeah. My, my question, uh, Mr. Bishop, goes to something else. You know, it has always, um, bothered me, bothered me that there's a disconnect between the legal age that, that students, um, can voluntarily leave, which is 16. It's not tied to completion of high school and, uh, the, the completion of high school that happens at 18, 19. So what we are really seeing statewide being reported is not a dropout age within the legally defined population. If we were to only look at the students by the age of 16, after which, I don't think, state should not count them as dropouts. If the state does not require them to remain in school, that if you're 17 and you decide to leave, that should not count as a dropout, right? So there's a disconnect that the state has put onto the high school to count students. But if you were to take those numbers that, that we just saw and removed the students that drop out at older than 16, do you have any idea how much lower the legal dropout might be?
Every, every student who dropped out is 16 or better. No one legally in the Commonwealth can drop out of high school before 16 years old.
But we have them leaving before, right?
No, we absolutely do not. We would, we would take...
But they disappear?
Well, if they disappear, I mean, if they're not, if they're, you know, I can't control where people move to.
No, 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 it's, it's not on you. It's, I'm, I'm just saying the way that we, we track these numbers, you know, yet we allow them to, to disappear at 16 and we count them as a dropout. How's that possible?
I think what the state does, and if I can, maybe I can help a little bit, is, is the state looks at the kids who come into any high school as a freshman and that identifies them with what we call a cohort.
Right.
So regardless of what age they are when they start as a freshman, I mean, a typical freshman is about 14, maybe 13 even, if he's really young, mostly 14. But we, uh, we have freshmen who start at the highest, at the high school, they may go into the freshman year already 18 years old or 16 or 17 because they just haven't got through middle school in a timely fashion. So, you know, uh, but, but legally they can't drop out. As Bill said, they can't drop out until they're 16. Now, if they move, you, you can't control that. Uh, but, but I think that's...
But isn't that a contradiction in itself? If you are required to be in school until you're 16, why are they calling you a name after you leave? after you leave?
Well, once you identify, once you are enrolled at Southbridge High School or any high school in the country, really, as a freshman, you immediately are tracked. And if you leave that high school, unless you show up somewhere else, then you are tracked back to that high school. So the kids who disappear get tracked back, and that's one of the things we all struggle with, because even if they come in as sophomores, or juniors, or seniors, they get identified with that cohort based on when they enroll, and they may only show up for a day or two. And all of a sudden, they disappear, and they're counted against your high school if they don't subsequently show up at a different high school.
And if I may, the summer drop, the ones who disappear over the summer, we are very aggressive. The police department has been very cooperative with us. Chief Sherrett has set the offices up, if we have a school, resource officer or not, they've been very willing, they go right to the houses and knock on doors, and we'll find empty apartments, you know, and in many cases, we'll find empty apartments.
How do we deal with students that leave and come back, and they leave and they come back? Is that more than one count?
We're obligated, as long as that student shows up on our door, we're obligated to enroll them as a student in public education.
But that still counts as a single student, right? It's not like we have...
It's all based on the October 1 Sims data report, okay? If a student is there October 1, he is part of that yearly dropout formula.
Ms. Prinspey?
I just wanted to speak a little bit further to what Mr. Ely was saying about the cohorts tracked from freshman year. The three students that presented three weeks ago, they got that information, no doubt, from the DOE website, because I downloaded it myself. And they have us, and it's that cohort from freshman year all the way up, they have us. The 2011 four-year graduation cohort is 19 percent dropout.
Right, which would make a graduation rate of 81 percent with that in mind.
Right. And they have our dropout percentage in the five-year graduation rate at 20 percent, almost 21 percent.
But, Ms. Prinspey, just...
But I'm just trying to say that, I know that's where they may have gotten this from.
And I just want to be clear, when we met with those three students, we said, "Look, we just want to know where that data came from," okay? Because it's quite different to say that it's 18 percent, that's not an annual dropout rate. We look at annual dropout, well, we may know that, Ms. Prinspey, but the public doesn't know that.
Okay, that's fine.
The public out there was the ones that came up at, I'll take, for instance, I'm at a refresher course for an EMT class, and I have an employee of this town criticizing our high school, saying you have an 18 percent annual dropout rate. That is not the truth. The truth is, we have a 5 percent dropout rate, and I agree with Mr. Bishop that one is too many kids, but I don't want it out in the, I didn't want it out in the public that we have an 18 percent annual dropout rate. That's why I asked Mr. Bishop to come here and discuss for the committee and the public that that population rate is, we understand that because we live it every day, but the public doesn't understand that.
Right, and we've had this discussion year after year when we receive these reports about the cohorts. Dr. Hanley gave the same reports publicly, 18 percent, 20 percent, 21 percent dropout. I'm not agreeing with that dropout rate. I'm saying that this is most likely where the students got it, because that's what's on the DOE website as far as cohort.
Right, and just to your point, it wasn't to, this presentation wasn't reflected to criticize the students' data. This presentation, and we were very clear with those students, Mr. Bishop and I had a conversation with the students, we said as a school committee, we are going to work with this group of students to make sure that we move this, their programs forward and their understanding of what's going on in the high school. So I met with Mr. Bishop and the students, I was there on another matter, and I said, "Let's talk to the students." And all we said to them is, "Look, what data, where did you get that data? Because our annual dropout rate is 5 percent." And clearly, they said, "Well, we know we got it somewhere, we're not sure." So we said, "That's great, but when we go out into the public, we want to just make sure that whatever the data is, we're able to explain where it came from and what it means." The Southbridge School District does not have an 18 percent dropout rate. Yes, those seniors that were here tonight, or the seniors of last year, that cohort when they started, 18 percent of them dropped out.
Over time.
Over that four-year period.
Right.
And five-year, but the annual rate is 5 percent. So our job as a school committee is to put out factual information and develop strategies to make sure that we can overcome these issues. Mr. Ely?
I think, maybe I can clear up a little bit of confusion, maybe not, because there's a lot of terminology being thrown around, and I want to make sure everybody understands that when you talk about a dropout rate, you're not always talking about the same dropout rate. The cohort dropout rate, the four-year dropout rate, the five-year dropout rate, the annual dropout rate, the actual dropout rate versus what, you know, it's really, really difficult as, it's to decide what, you have to pin people down. I mean, the girls that were here last week did a great job of presenting, they did not present it as a four-year dropout rate, they presented it as a cohort rate, they actually presented it as just the 18 percent dropout rate. And I think what Mr. Bishop's trying to do here is point out that there's a lot of different ways to look at it, and that annual dropout rate of 5 percent a year is certainly a lot more acceptable than 18 percent a year. But it's not acceptable to them, it's not acceptable to us, and we all, I know, have strategies involved in trying to fix that. But when you talk about dropout rate, it's really, really important to understand exactly what you're talking about. Exactly. And that's not as simple as just using the term dropout rate. And I think the other thing is, and this may sound really unusual, there's no correlation between the dropout rate, even the four-year dropout rate, and the actual graduation rate. Because the graduation rate is a different number, calculated in a different way, and even though they are so, they're sort of dependent, interdependent, they are not directly proportional. So an 18 percent dropout rate does not mean it's 82 percent graduation rate, as nice as maybe that might be. Because we have kids who stay in school for another fifth year, we have kids who stay in school even for a sixth year. So I think, I think it's really important that everybody gets on the same page talking about those numbers, and I appreciate the effort to try to put everybody on the same page here. But that number is something that we're concerned about, we're actually addressing tomorrow in a meeting that we have here in my office. So we will, thank you, I appreciate it.
I would just like to comment on the three young ladies who were here last week. Mr. Jovan and I had an opportunity to meet with them, as I said, last week. I'd like to have a building full of young people like that. The tenacity, the maturity, the ability to present, to articulate their frame of reference and their point of view was so refreshing to me, and we had a wonderful dialogue. We have another meeting set up for the Monday after April vacation, and we want to keep that lines of communication. They brought forth some good points, an hour for lunch, I don't think that'll be happening, unless it's followed by a nap for me, but no, but they brought up some good points, you know, they're concerned about the hoodies, and there's been an awful lot of dialogue on that in the national media of late. It's great to hear from another side about how we can do things better. I don't think any one of us goes to work every day thinking we're doing the best million-dollar job that we could do. I mean, every one of us can find some way to improve, and I think these youngsters put a little more thought on our plate. And I appreciate it, and I really enjoyed all youngsters, they're three nice kids.
Mr. Lozlo?
Mr. Bishop, thank you for being here. I do agree with you as far as one dropout is one too many. I think everybody up here believes that. I've been on the board a long time, and this has been an issue that we've been beating over the head since 1985, probably, different administrators, different school committees. I think what the, I think the young ladies did a fine job in their research, there's nothing wrong with handing in research and data, but I think, you know, as a school committee, it's our job to have clarification on some of this. It's our job to inform the public of the facts as far as, you know, what is the real deal? I mean, I get beat over the head 24/7 that this bazillion-dollar high school is going to raise our taxes, and this is going to happen, and that's going to happen. It's our job as elected officials, it's our job as administrators or elected officials to turn around and say, "Wait a minute, really? The last thing you need in the town of Southbridge is more negativity." And I think that you can put a statistic out there, you can make statistics say whatever you want, but I think the point of clarification is a better line of communication, the students going into the, to the front office, into our office, you know, it's great to get online and pull up a number, throw it out there, and all of a sudden, boom, cartoons, letters to the... If that's what it's all about, it's our job to clarify, and in a professional manner. Kids are kids, guided by adults, maybe they didn't get the proper guidance on where to get what they wanted as far as the data, or however it worked. I just like the tenacity, I share that with you. As far as these kids are true leaders of the community and of the student body, and I think that they have a place at Southbridge High School with their leadership. But again, I think what I saw was it needs a little discussion, maybe some guidance as far as, you know, some of the stuff that's going on in the school, and how is it, what happens to get a half-hour lunch break, or a longer lunch break, or a different scheduling? If, I think the kids saw what administrators and school committees go through, whether it be policy, budget, and state laws, and all types of bylaws and policies, I think they would look at it a little differently, and I think that's where the young adults need guidance, and I think it's our job to guide them and to help them with a lot of the stuff and get more people under the big tent, so to speak, so we can move forward our district. But negativity, you know, I shake my head tonight because some people liked what went out there. That made me sick. But I think that, again, Mr. Jovan, to his credit, to his leadership, to get people in front of us, to articulate the message and to clarify what we're doing in the system. There is a lot of money being spent to educate kids, there's a lot of money being spent to alleviate dropouts, and I think that has to be public. It's public dollars, I think it's our job to articulate that, and I think tonight is just another clarification in another year that we beat the graduation rate up and we beat the statistics up. But as long as the public understands and we move forward from here, I said it's going to be all positive as usual.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Degora?
I just, I'd just like to comment. I would just, is this working here? Okay, I just would like to say this. Basically, if I'm sitting at home right now and I just watch this presentation, I still don't know what the heck you guys are talking about, to be honest with you. And I'm talking about the guy sitting at home after the last presentation we had, he's sitting there, and he's saying these guys are doing a spin on this. That's what they're basically thinking. I think we need to explain a little more, a little clearer to the guy sitting at home, because he's getting these numbers thrown at him now, 18 percent, 5.5 percent, he's got this terminology cohorts. He's saying, I mean, I know I would be, if I was sitting at home and I'm saying, "Okay, I got a kid here, I want to send him to Southbridge High," I got someone here saying that the state's writing it down at 18 percent, Southbridge guys are saying 5.5 percent, the school committee's saying 5.5 percent, but they're saying it's 5.5 percent, then they're throwing out all this terminology that the guy in the street does not have any clue about, honestly. He has no, when you talk cohorts, come on, are you kidding me? So the three people that came up here a couple weeks ago presented what they presented in good faith. They went, I don't know, you know, they're saying they don't remember where they got it. Apparently, it was either fed to them by someone else, or they went on the internet, or whatever, but that's the number that was there. I don't know if 5.5 showed up somewhere and then had a definition, and they simply discounted that. I tend to doubt that. I tend to think that they went, "Hey, look, this is on the state website, must be what it is." And I'm sure that there were all the other schools listed as well. What I'm saying is this, is I'm saying that before we leave here, I think we really need to clarify where you're coming up with these numbers, because, again, quite frankly, if I'm sitting at home and I'm talking to my wife or to my buddy and we're watching this, I'm still pretty lost as to where you came up with this. I think you need to actually define the 5.5 versus the 18. When we're talking about, look, the 18 percent or the 5.5, whichever, goes from freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, and senior year. And so if you're starting with 1,000 kids and you're ending with 400 kids, that's one. Versus at the end of your senior year, what do you have? You need to explain that, because the public, quite frankly, and please, if I am saying something out of line and I'm making it sound like, "Hey, the public's not intelligent," I apologize. I don't mean it like that. But I think that we need to make this extremely clear to the public, and not just say, "Hey, you know, these are the numbers, come on." Thank you.
Mr. Degora, that is a point well taken, because I do know that even in my own household, my wife struggled at times to, until she understood what the definition of the cohort meant.
Yeah.
What does a cohort mean?
Exactly.
And that is a point well taken, and we do throw out all kinds of numbers, and Mr. Lozlo's point was correct, you throw out all these numbers, and you're right, too, that who knows what the heck's going on. So, Ms. Ely?
I think I can clarify some of this. The 5.5 percent represents the number of students who dropped out of our high school last year, not necessarily in a particular grade. They may have been a ninth grader, a 10th grader, an 11th grader, or a 12th grader. We start out the year with X number of students, at the end of the year, we have X minus 5.5 percent along all four grade levels. Does that, that's the 5.5 percent dropout rate for that particular year.
The entire school population.
The entire school population.
Exactly.
The cohort is the stu, is a group of students who are in a particular start as a freshman in a particular grade and travel through together. But they may not stay together, because they may, a kid may not get enough credits to go to become a sophomore, but they're still in that cohort even though they may take five years to graduate, or they may never graduate, but they still belong to that cohort as it travels through time. And that's the four-year, that cohort that they belong to when they graduate from school. How many of those kids are still in school? How many of them have transferred to another school? How many of them have totally left school altogether? We don't know where they are. Those are the dropouts, the ones who don't, we don't know where they went, or they went to, they just came in, their parents dropped them out of school. Those are the dropouts, that's the 18 percent at the end of four years. There is no four-year cohort dropout rate until you end the four years. But you have an annual dropout rate, which is, changes every year depending on the student body that you have in your building.
Okay. And, Mr. Bishop, just so the public's clear, we talked about MasGrad initiative, okay? And this grad initiative on the, of the grant. And it's quite possible, and Mrs. Prinspey brings up a good point, we'd like to explore what other monies they're using with that, and perhaps the state has already earmarked with this 18 age dropout rate that they want to raise it to, they're talking about initiatives to school districts to assist you, so they may be having some of that money, but that would be another topic. So could you define, you did a little bit of a job on it, but when they said cohorts, within that 133 schools, 74 districts, those types of districts, and correct me if I'm wrong, were districts that had the same free and reduced lunch?
No. No, you got into that sizable cohort if you exceeded the state average dropout rate for the 2008-2009 school year.
Okay, so out of that, do they then look at, within that cohort, schools that may have the same social economic status, the same demographics? I'm sure there's got to be some of those factors as well.
They're moving to that direction. I know Mr. Zangy brought some data forward on that. Is Jeff here?
Yeah.
He brought on the dot.
Comparative districts.
Comparative districts, right. We're looking at districts with similar, as you said, free and reduced lunch, that's primarily the one that they're really using a lot, and we're in districts with similar demographics and similar challenges.
Yeah. I think the answer is really simple. As free and reduced lunch goes up, traditionally dropout rates go up and graduation rates go down. And my argument and my mantra since I've been here is that doesn't make a difference. We have to be better than that.
Oh, absolutely.
We have to get our kids, as Bill said, and I think we all agree, one kid dropping out is too many. I don't care where they come from, what school district they're in, doesn't make a difference to me. If a kid drops out of Newton North, that's just as bad as a kid dropping out of Southbridge High School or Wellesley. It doesn't make a difference to me. We have to do what we can for our kids, and unfortunately, because our kids are maybe environmentally deprived at times, we may have to do more. And that's, I think, what this school committee has been committed to do, is as much as we possibly can. So we could probably beat this one up all night, I think.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you.
Next presentation for this evening is the New Curriculum Framework Updates.
Yes, I've asked both the ELA Director Karen Ryan and Tammy Peralt, our math director math, to do presentations tonight on the
Director Math, to do presentations tonight on the new curriculum frameworks that are coming into the state that we're going to be held responsible for beginning next year. So I'll turn it over to the ladies to let them do their presentations and ask them to keep those presentations to ten minutes?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Had to move that microphone down, Karen, or get the handheld microphone. Max is going to need one, too.
I think they weren't, maybe they're not.
You have to use your microphone.
Oh, sorry. Reason I'm here tonight is that Mr. Ely wanted us to just give you a little bit better idea of what the new frameworks for ELA and math look like. So I thought we'd start with the ELA. And for the first time, there are, new frameworks are based on the Common Core, which is forty-eight states have adopted them. But we have added things. So we're going to go through that. What makes Massachusetts actually better than just the Common Core? And for the first time, the literacy, the literacy frameworks also include literacy in history, in social studies, in technical subjects, in science. So not only do we think of being literate in reading, you have to take your skills in reading and go forward and be able to use them in all subject areas. So the Common Core standards came from, adopted by the forty-eight states. Things that Massachusetts added were a strand for pre-kindergarten. We're the only state in the country that has added that preschool frameworks. Also, there's an expanded glossary and bibliography in the Massachusetts frameworks. And as they did in the old frameworks, they used to call them the appendix, it's suggestions for literature for younger students and then again, older students. So these are just some of the key ideas that are foundational for the Common Core for literacy. The biggest one is we want all our students, when they leave school, to be college and career ready. We want them to be able to go out and get a job and function well or be ready to go into college and not need remedial services when they get there. We want them to be able to read narrative texts. We want them to be able to read what we used to call nonfiction, which is informational text. More than ever, we're asking our students to be able to write what we used to call expository text. But we're also going to argument text where people have to defend an argument because that's deeper thought is required, higher order thinking skills. So we're asking them to find evidence. We're tying reading and writing. And now it's not just the English teacher who's helping with these things. If you're a science teacher, if you're a social studies teacher, you want your students to be able to perform good literacy activities within your content area. So being literate is the heart of learning everything. If you can't read, you won't do well in science. You won't do well in social studies. You won't do well in math. Again, the key design principles, college and career focus. And we want things to be clear. There used to be twenty-six standards in the Massachusetts, old Massachusetts frameworks. There are now ten. But they follow in a nice vertical alignment. So this is what it looks like in first grade. This is what it looks like in fifth grade. This is what it looks like in twelfth grade. So it's very clear. And we are looking for collaboration from grade to grade. So the way it's organized, the book is kind of daunting, but there's a pre-K to five section and then a six to twelve section. The pre-K to five, it's reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and language. We expect children to be proficient in all those areas. When you get to the six to twelve, it's just reading and writing. So I'm not going to go through all of these. These are the, you have in your PowerPoint. These are the anchor standards for reading. The reason I put those in here is I thought if anytime you ever go through a classroom, these are the things that you should be looking for. These are the activities that should be happening. You're asking kids to do comparisons, to analyze, to interpret. These are all higher order thinking skills. I added writing, speaking and listening, and language. So you can go over those at your leisure. This is what the standards look like in social studies, science. And you can see that they talk about citing evidence. So in other words, whatever subject area you're working in, we expect kids to go back and be able to find the evidence that supports why they formed a certain conclusion, why they have the ideas that they do, be able to defend their beliefs. Last two slides I think are most important. Number one, what does this mean for Southbridge? The bar has been set by the state and we are going to work extremely hard to get our students to where they need to be. This is, we're in the curriculum mapping process right now that I think you've probably heard about at previous meetings. And it's all about curricular freedom. We know what we have to do. So we're going to be trying to find as many resources as we can to support getting our students to that goal of mastering all these standards. We have to think about, there are going to be some, no students cannot learn, but there will be some students that might need a different resources or a different timetable. But we are committed to having every child learn and master these standards. And that we're all really stakeholders, you as a school committee, myself as an administrator, all the teachers that I work in, we're all a team. And we're working towards success for all our students in literacy. Now, this is the last slide, and it's our plan of action, what we are currently doing and where we are headed. We have created a curriculum mapping team. There are teachers from all the schools going from pre-K to grade twelve, working with administrators. And we have recently begun a collaboration with the Achievement Network. And what we're going to be doing is creating standards-based vertically-aligned curriculum where things match the frameworks and follow along in a very orderly fashion. So if you're a sixth grade English teacher, you know what they covered in fifth grade. You know what you need to cover. And you know what the seventh grade teacher is going to be covering. So what we're doing is creating a calendar of when things will be taught. We will integrate planning so that teachers are all with the same program and that we will have interim assessments. They will be four times a year in ELA. We're going to have, identify concrete tools. They are things that we already have. There might be a few things we might add to fill in any gaps in the standards. And we will be developing units that are aligned by the standards and daily lesson plans, which will be used in, with our collaboration with Atlas Rubicon, which is a mapping, a software mapping company. And we will be using what's called understanding by design. And it's a backward design template that includes things like all the understandings the students have to have, the essential questions the teachers need to ask to get the students to their goals. And they'll have specific performance tasks and learning activities to get them to that goal. Does anybody have any questions? I know it was very quick.
Questions? Comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let me just log off of ELA here.
Get rid of one and put the other one up, right?
What's, yeah, right. Give me a second. This math. And we're going to do the slideshow. Oh, back already. Okay. Good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for having me. I haven't been able to present to the school committee yet. So this is my first time. So I'm thoroughly enjoying my time here in Southbridge. This is a wonderful community, and I don't have to tell you that. You already know that. But I've been greeted warmly by most everyone, and I'm thoroughly happy to be here. So thank you. I, Karen, if you could pass out mine. I'm going to, we're now going to hand you my PowerPoint and my book. And right from the get-go, you're going to see the differences between math and ELA. Karen's ELA frameworks is horizontal and mine is vertical. And the differences go on from there. These are very different books, very different alignment. So we're going to have very different paths in this journey. Okay. Again, Karen had already deciphered what the differences are between the Common Core standards in the Massachusetts frameworks. But the last time I had met with Dr. Domenico, she had asked for some sort of flow chart explaining the difference with the standards, et cetera. So actually, that's on the very last page of your handout for math. And the math one is the maroon and gold. The very last page, you'll see a flow chart just explaining what are standards and domains and strands. So if you have any questions, I'll, maybe afterwards, you can certainly ask them. In the Common Core math frameworks, Massachusetts accepted them as they were, except we added some things in math that we weren't happy with. So these are the statistics on what we went ahead and added. K to eight, there were a number of additions. At the high school level, they actually inserted an entire pathway that was not available at the Common Core level. This is just the summary of what's happening K to five. And basically, what's happening is the, how can I say? It says a solid foundation of what I call number cents. Fractions, decimals, and percents are really going to be hammered home at the elementary level prior to coming up into the middle and high school grades. So supposedly, mastery is going to happen at that level, in a perfect world. The, beyond K to five, the middle grades are really going to be focusing on a rich, robust curriculum, which will then prepare them for the high school where they can apply and model what they've learned in mathematics. These are our key principles. And really, what I want to focus on of these six phrases is depth versus breadth. These Common Core standards are, these Massachusetts frameworks are vastly different than the two thousand, two thousand and four frameworks. The two thousand, two thousand and four really spiraled, whereas that is no longer occurring. We're looking to master these topics in the fewest number of grades possible instead of carrying them through ten different grades. The organization of this book here, okay, she can certainly see. Our previous frameworks, pre-K to eight, included five different types of math strands. Now with the new frameworks, say in grade five, they will no longer be learning, of course, I choose grade five as the example, and that's the exception. In grade four, they will no longer be learning five different types of math throughout the year. They're only going to be learning three, which is going to loosen up that calendar for teachers to get in and dig deeper. Okay? This is right from the DUCY website, from a great PowerPoint called the overview. And the solid colored blocks are vertically what the kids will be learning in those grade levels. So if you look at grade three, you have three in the purplish pink. And then you have nothing in the orange, which is actually the algebra strands or domains now. Geometry is the only domain that is carried through pre-K to eight. And then measurement, data, and stats, and probability. So, whereas those used to be colored in, like solid. They used to learn all of it all the time. Yeah, go ahead.
What's the black one?
I'm sorry. It's really, it's blue. It didn't come out great. Measurement and data. Measurement and data. Okay. And our plan of action is the same as ELA's. We are, you know, certainly starting our curriculum mapping with a phenomenal group of teachers. We both have formulated district math teams and district ELA teams that we've already met with. We're going to be collaborating with Achievement Network, which is going to lead us into this curriculum mapping process. And then our Atlas Rubicon, which is really the template for unit planning, which, this is not, this is not an overnight process. This is certainly an extended period of time. We're going to be working on this. As in my next slide, I brought up the same frequently asked questions I had met with some of you at a smaller subcommittee meeting. And I kept these on the slide because I think they're real, it's really important for the public and the additional school committee members to know some of, some of your concerns are things that we're addressing. And I know Dr. O'Leary is concerned about, why are we still curriculum mapping? I heard you, you know, a number of meetings ago. And I think it's important to address that. We're still curriculum mapping because that's a live document. It's living, and it's changing, and it's breathing year to year to year. What we really want is we want a strong, very, very strong living document going into these brand-new frameworks that will stay in place with all the changes and you just make modifications instead of starting from scratch every year. Okay? And then the question, the second thing you all said to me the first night you met me is, what are we doing with everyday math? And my question, my answer to you is, it's unknown. We are going to find out probably very soon through the curriculum mapping process with the teachers, with the practitioners. We're going to be addressing it because these standards are so different. My concern is that everyday math may not meet the needs of our new standards. And I have been doing some research. The District of Columbia was actually using everyday math. And they tried to align to the new Common Core standards. And they found it almost impossible that they got rid of everyday math entirely. So I am looking into it. I'm researching it. It's not going to be a quick decision, and it's not going to be one without forethought. So, thank you. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Please, yes.
Take your time as far as everyday math, but when you get rid of it, I fully endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Not going to jump to any decisions, though. One of the things that we've already discovered is it's really difficult to map everyday math. That's what, that's what the teachers have already found out. So if there aren't any questions for Tammy, I'd like to thank both of you for being here this evening and for the work that I know you did. And I like the way that they mirrored each other because that shows we're working as a team, and that's really, really important. I will say that much of what you saw tonight with these two ladies is our initiatives that go through our strategic planning and go through our accelerated plan as well.
Thank you. Moving on, reported superintendent, Ms. Ely?
Yes. As you know, we have submitted our new accelerated improvement plan, and we've already begun the implementation of that. We have a meeting tomorrow with the administration, a four-hour meeting to actually sort of identify who's going to do what, when, how, why, and how, and with what materials it's going to require us to do that. So that will map that plan out for implementation. While we've already done some things that are in it, they won't obviously be in that. We've already done those things, and we'll continue to do them. One of the things that is consistent from both our first plan all the way through all five plans that we've now done and submitted is we need to identify within Southbridge what our expectations are for teachers. What does good instruction look like? So we started as an administrative team for a few meetings, talking about what we're looking for when we go in and do our learning walks, and what we're doing when we go into observe teachers, what we expect to see in every classroom. We started with a kind of an unwieldy term, but you're going to see at the top of this page. It's called the District Administration Definition of High Quality Instruction. That is now going to become what we call the Southbridge Standard. So the Southbridge Standard that you're going to see tonight is a draft because our next step right now, it's right now in the hands of the teachers, going through the teachers' union and to get their input and anything that they'd like to add to it or that they'd like to see reworded. So we're working with them. And then we give it to you for your input. So you're going to get a copy of this tonight. And I would welcome you to read it over carefully at your leisure because what it really does is I think it defines high-quality instruction in any environment. But what we want to do is make it unique to Southbridge. And we've added quite a bit to it, actually, since we had originally started because we feel like things are important. And one of the things we've been noticing as we go into classrooms is some classroom walls are bare. They have no sensory input for students at all regarding the subject matter. And some of them you go into and you don't know what to look at first. There's thousands of things on the wall that may not be all pertinent to the teaching and learning going on in the classroom. So that's been added to this, what we are now calling the Southbridge Standard. So I would welcome your input to that anytime in the near future. And then our next and final step will be to take this draft to a group of community leaders. We're bringing a group of people together to give this to them as an explanation of, or definition of what we expect in Southbridge from our teachers. And I think the teachers will appreciate it. My feedback from the teachers so far has been very positive. They recognize most of the things on here as things we talk about every day. It actually mirrors very closely the It actually mirrors very closely the, some of the indicators of high-quality instruction that are within the new educator evaluation framework that's mandated by the federal government and the state government. But, that's where we are right now. We're to the point of giving it to you, getting feedback from the teachers. The next and final step will be to finalize it with a group of parents and people from the community. And, it will then become published to our teachers and our community as the Southbridge Standard for all teachers in our district. So, when we do evaluations, observations, learning walks, monitoring, the education that's going on in these classrooms, we'll all be talking the same language. And, I'll leave my report at that.
Mrs. Transpec?
Yes, you submitted the revised accelerated improvement plan to the state. Do we have a timeframe that we will hear back from them as to whether it's accepted or not?
What's been their timeframe has been anywhere from six to eight weeks, four to six weeks, depending. I think it'll be a little faster this time, they have not given us any definite. I should be able to find out something on Thursday, I have a meeting with somebody here from the DESE. But, I think we've been working with them along the way on this new revised plan. So, I think that we should get a fairly quick turnaround. They've already approved conditionally our, what we call our main drivers, the main areas of focus, which I think you've all seen this document somewhere along the line. This is the new version of that, I'll give you a copy of that in your Friday packet. But, not much has changed, but some things have been shifted over into a different line at the request of the state. So, you won't see a lot of new things in here, but we have taken some things out that they didn't think were going to be immediately impacting the classroom. But, we feel like the new plan should be, get approval relatively quickly, I'm hoping by spring break, but I can't swear to that.
Thank you.
Are they, is the state, isn't the state due to come and give us another report in April?
Yes. The meeting I have Thursday is called a highlight report, a highlight meeting, and that is actually, serves a dual purpose of being the quarterly report meeting, which will then follow from that meeting, will be written the second quarterly report, which will then come to me as a draft, and then, they'll come present to you. And, I'm anticipating that would be in the end of April, but I haven't got a firm date on them yet.
Thank you. Mr. Lazo?
Eric, to and through the chair, the district definition of high quality of instruction, I like it. I think, you know, input by the teachers would be wonderful, and by the school committee and any other players in the district. Does it have to be done in a question? Does the teacher use the variety, or should we put it in a statement?
Well, we, reason, we had a lot of conversation about that, actually. The reason it's in a question format is because, in our discussion, was, we want the teachers asking themselves the question, do I do that? Is that what my classroom looks like? So, we felt like putting the Southbridge Standard in the form of a question, it would lead the parents, the teachers, the students, everybody to be asking the questions about, is my classroom, does my classroom look like this? So, we did have a lot of conversation about it being put in question format. And, you know, it doesn't have to be in that format, but it seems to serve the purpose of why we're having it.
If I could just take it a step further, I don't, I'm not against having it in question form for teachers or for parents. But, I think this document should be printed like the Seven Commandments, where it is what it is, call it what it is, and let's live by it. If we start asking questions, you know, and again, I think, you know, it's all warm and fuzzy and sweet, I'm sure, that, you know, does a teacher do this, and does a teacher do that? Very politically correct, I guess, but when I look at this, these are seven great standards that I think that should be put in statement form, and printed, and posted, in a building, in the classrooms, everywhere, because this is like a school model type thing, like, we should live up to our standard. And, I don't know, I'm just suggesting it, I'm not saying it's gonna be that. For the women fuzzy, we'll ask questions, for the ones that wanna get it done, we'll put it in statement.
I think that, and your point is well taken. We did have that discussion, just so you know. You're not asking a question that hasn't been asked by teachers and administrators, but I think the key is, we reinforce it with every classroom observation or evaluation that we do. So, we're gonna be asking the teachers in a meeting, when we meet with the teacher after an observation, did you meet the standard? Did you do this? Is this evident in your classroom? So, I think the reason it's in question format is that, but I understand your point.
You know, I come from a coaching mentality. If you're gonna coach, we coach. If we're gonna ask somebody to do it, not expect them to do it, we pay a lot of money, we should expect it, not ask it. That's all I'm saying. Whatever, anything's better than what we have. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Seenon, report the business manager. Do you have anything?
A couple of brief things. First, a couple of updates on purchasing of furniture, fixtures, and equipment and technology. We had a very successful furniture, fixtures, and equipment bid opening. We had at least one bid for all of our different bid groups. All of them came in under budget. In looking and projecting the budget out, even if the few individual items that were not bid were purchased at, or even slightly above what we budgeted for them, the FFNE budget will come in under budget. So, once we've shored up all those purchases, the school building committee, and, you know, and the leadership of Mr. Lazo will kinda go back and look at, seeing if there are other things that we defrayed initially from our initial FFNE budget that we might go back and revisit. Technology, this week, we're trying to wrap up the telephony and the local area network pieces of the technology. Following that will probably be the wireless technology, and the last piece of the puzzle will be the actual machines, if you will. So, that's all progressing. And, then, just on a slightly different note, I know certainly there's been a lot of, I think, a couple of weeks ago, we had a question from a member of the public, where were we on the redistricting of the elementary schools? We've actually completed our first pass. Quite frankly, we're doing some tweaking now to, obviously, we wanna try to balance the populations as much as we possibly can, but we need to do so in a logical fashion, and obviously, there's a number of considerations in doing that. So, again, I think we're on target to being able to have that ready to be released, you know, before vacation.
Questions, comments?
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Moving on, school committee actions, we have no actions this evening. Unfinished business, I put these on the agenda so that we just don't forget about them. So, and I think my plan would be going forward, because these are some very important topics for the school committee, to have them as stand-in items on the agenda, so that if there is any update, it can be presented. So, that would be my goal for the remainder of the year. So, with that, we had the district reconfiguration, updated progress, I think Terry just updated. Is there anything else?
Terry did some, yeah. And, while Terry's been working on the computer, I've been meeting with the teachers at all three buildings, three elementary buildings. We gave them a form to fill out, to indicate whether they would like to stay in their grade level for next year, or whether they, it was more important for them to stay in their building, and then be assigned to whatever grade level that the principal wanted them to teach. We had those forms got returned to me today. So, once we have the identification of the number of students in each building by grade level, we'll know the number of sections of each class by grade level, and then, we'll be able to take those teachers' requests and accommodate as many of them as we can, within reason, using that, their choices. I mean, we feel like it's important that if a teacher really is, died in the war, I have to stay as a fifth-grade teacher, if we can accommodate that, we should. If we can't, then we'll have a good reason why we can't. So, that's the next step, once we get that, the finalization of the lines, which we'll need you to approve, I think, because it sets boundaries for the schools in the future. Then, I think we'll be, in the meantime, be able to identify how many classes of first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade we're gonna have in all these buildings. Our biggest sticking point right now is the demographic breakdown. The numbers, as we, we actually started with Main Street as sort of the boundary. One side, West Street, one side, Charlton Street, and when we did that, the numbers were like within two students. So, the numbers of kids on one side of Main Street and the other side of Main Street is almost even in grades one through five for next year. But, demographically, they're not. So, we had to do some tweaking to that, to make sure that we don't have an unbalanced, two buildings that are unbalanced demographically. So, I think we'll be able to do that fairly quickly, but our target date was spring break, and I think we're gonna meet that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Woodruff?
One question, thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for the superintendent. We were presented with a proposal this evening, and I was wondering if you'd be able to look at that while you're doing these reconfigurations, and come back with us at the next meeting with an answer for the student, for the teacher who presented that proposal, to see if that is something that we should be doing or looking at, or if it's already been looked at, or however, so that we can have an answer for us and the teacher who presented that to us.
I've answered the question three times, and so, I think that's why it came to you, because I didn't like my answer. You passed a reconfiguration based on a pre-kindergarten, kindergarten readiness first grade, Eastford Road, in two one-through-five buildings. That's been the way we've looked. We haven't looked at doing a K one, two, five, because that wasn't the configuration that the subcommittee of curriculum recommended, and came to the school committee even as an option, I don't think. So, I would reject it, and I have, from that standpoint, but certainly, it's within your rights to change that. But, there are issues with the special area schedules. I chose to bring the nine teachers in, in those special areas, and meet with them. Many of them have since thanked me that we involved them in the decision-making process. It's not easy to figure out how to make sure that we cover the contractual obligations, but also cover all the classes. But, I added a little caveat, I said, can you do it and actually make the program stronger? So, that was where they're trying to go, trying to make the program stronger, trying to mirror the two programs in both the two one-through-five buildings. And, the teachers have been emailing each other back and forth since that meeting with really great ideas. And, I've stayed out of that fray, because I want them to resolve it themselves, because they're the ones that have to live with it. And, we'll now bring the principals into the next conversation, and have them part of that decision-making process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the ad hoc committee on the maintenance department update, and it's Mr. Lazo's ad hoc.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that it's in a holding pattern to the, once we go into April, we're supposed to do a, I'll call a meeting with Terry and the powers-to-be to discuss tour and walk through, and look at this all over again. I know that there's been a lot of ideas and tire-kicking, I just think that it won't take long, but I know Terry's been busy with the budget, the new school, so I think we'll wait until probably the second week of April in order to have a meeting.
Thank you. Next is the accelerated improvement plan. Mr. Ely, updated us on that, is there anything further you wanna end?
Just one more thing. What happens in this plan is, we are required by the state to implement the plan, whether it's approved or not. So, we are now in the process of actually finishing up the implementation of a plan that was rejected, and beginning the implementation of the new plan that was submitted. The nice thing about it is, we made sure that the plans actually marry pretty well together. In other words, there's not very much new stuff in it, it's just formatted differently. So, I think that as we implement, we're not gonna be changing a lot of what we've been doing all year. The, our next charge really is to have this meeting with our monitor, and get the second quarterly report done on the implementation of the plan that was not approved.
And, thank you for getting that information out in the timely manner that we had requested at the last meeting, so appreciate that. Any questions on any of that information? Okay, new business, next regular school committee meeting will be held on April 10th, 2012, in the council chambers. Next item I have is the superintendent's evaluation process. Just per our policy, we're coming up on April, is to have that process completed, so that's why I put it on the agenda. We need to discuss, as a school committee, pursuant to the contract with the superintendent, that it's between the school committee and the superintendent to agree on the instrument. The state has put a new instrument in place as far as educator evaluations, so I'm looking to set a meeting next week, special school committee meeting, so that we can meet as a school committee and discuss this with Eric, come up with what that template will look like, so that we can hopefully get the process either completed by the April timeline, if not by the first meeting in May. But, I don't wanna go much further than that in the timeline. I think we have enough information as far as what our school district goals are, what's transpired in the last year, or year and a half, to fairly evaluate the superintendent on those items on the district. Do you have anything to add, Eric?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business from anyone else? Just a couple of things on the new business that I'd like to discuss. One, I've been approached by the members of the Lions Club about a donation that they'd like to make to the new Southbridge High School in memory, they have some money in memory of Mr. Welch, who was a longtime teacher in Southbridge High School. They're looking to donate the money, and the question came up as to, would they be able to maybe have a plaque put up in a room dedicated to Mr. Welch? And, I'm not sure what the process that would go through. I know we have a school committee process on naming different rooms. Mr. Lazo?
I too have been getting, Vazoto's family had a young child into music that passed on, that wants to donate money. I know Mr. Javasi, he's been a representative of the family in Florida, they're a Southbridge family. We also had a class of, I wanna say fifty, hope they don't get mad at me, that had some leftover money in their treasury, that they wanted to do something at the school. So, I look to Terry as far as, you know, dedicating things and stuff like that is a different ballgame, but as far as people that want to donate, we have, we have people that, you know, want a small plaque to say so-and-so donated some money, and I'm not sure, the financial handling of that does not go, and maybe we should create a fund, or have a meeting and try and deal with this. What's happening is with the new building, the more we tour, the more people wanna do something, which is great. I mean, we have teachers that want greenhouses, we want people that want to get involved, so I think instead of holding people back, I think we've gotta open up and let the people in as far as how to handle this.
Terry?
That's easy. We'll always take money. No. Seriously, we have what's a revolving account for what I call public school donations. And, essentially, if a member of the public or an organization wanted to make a donation, they would go through the process of probably sending a letter to the committee, because the committee does have to accept the purpose of that donation. But, then, we would simply deposit that money in the revolving account, and the expenditures associated with whatever that purpose would be, would come out of that particular designated line within the revolving account for public school donations for that purpose.
They seem to want some sort of recognition, or to spend it on something in a particular area. One was music. I know Mr. Welch was a former teacher, an athlete. I'm not sure if we can have a committee meeting and talk about an honor roll of some sort for, you know, people that do this. So, I think it's wide open. I mean, I'm sure we can figure out a way to accept the money, but my bigger question is, the building itself, and what we can do for donors. I know that they have, like, Harrington Memorial Hospital, walk-in, the donor, the wing, or this, that. I'm not sure you want 5,000 plaques all over the school, but, especially after you look at all the ceramic tiles being put in. But, to do something, I don't know, in, outside the building, inside the building, for an honor roll for the alumni that do donate.
Mrs., Dr. Domenico?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think maybe we, I don't know if we need a new subcommittee for that, or appointed committee for ad hoc tasks, or coming up with strategies, but there's a number, and we are all aware of them. Number of strategies that different institutions have adopted for honoring and naming donations. It goes from brick buying and brick imprint in a walkway that leads, to something, to naming the auditorium after a person for, I don't know, $2 million donation, to all sorts of different opportunities. And, I think if we brainstorm, we might be able to come as a group to a couple of three possibilities, how to honor people that have invested. I know that, and this is just literally off the top of my head, I know that we were talking when we visited the building, that certain passages will have street names. You know, so, maybe there's something that we could connect with donors and have them recognized in a very unique and specific way to the school, I don't know. But, I think between three, four people getting together and really brainstorming some strategies, we could come up with something that would be probably acceptable.
That's fair. I think first, Terry, if you could just take a look at our policy?
I can do that.
See if there's any policy language, and then, we'll come back to the next meeting and come up with where we would go, just so we can get back to some of these people, because they'd like to get going on this.
I certainly can do that. And, while this would not be the type of permanent thing you're talking about, one thing... you're talking about, one thing that just popped into my mind is, we will have a video signage system within our new high school, middle high school, so there will be television screens throughout various areas that we will be able to put signage, and I would think one of the recurring signs we might want to put up would be thanks to donors who donated various things for that. Again, not a plaque, but another way of recognizing them.
Mr. Jamie, could we have a subcommittee of the whole sometime in the next?
What we could do is, Terry can look it up, and next week, we can bring it up, just as a quick agenda item. Next week, when we do the superintendent evaluation process, then we can move that forward, so, okay? The next thing that I had is, I, along with Mr. Ely and Ms. Scharr, attended the meeting with Representative Durant, held over in Dudley. It was quite informative, even on Chapter 70 money, some of the trials and tribulations of funding. I know Terry was out of state and regrettably couldn't be there. It's a tough year, I think, budgetary-wise, Chapter 70-wise. We're looking at a budget where we have an increase of about a million, what was it, four?
Million, three.
Million, three, with some challenges with the town. I know the town's working through the budget. I was shocked to hear what trouble some other of our colleagues in other districts are facing, specifically Dudley Chalton. Dudley Chalton's facing a $4.1 million deficit that they have to cut very seriously, so I think we've positioned ourselves as a school committee very well. Kudos to my fellow colleagues. When the times were really tough, we were purposeful in the use of our stimulus money, and not putting a lot of positions through that stimulus money, and I think now some of those other surrounding towns are feeling more pain, because they used it as a stopgap, hoping that the economy would turn around faster, and we were pretty surgical in the way that we strategically used that money. So it was a great meeting. Representative Durant's next, we're targeting to have his next roundtable at the new high school. He's very eager to have a meeting at that new high school, so we look forward to that. And that's all I have. Anything else? New business? Okay, seeing none. School committee reports, curriculum, Mr. Deguio.
Very brief, very briefly, last night, we met, discussed a couple of things. We had the subcommittee there, as well as some members of the committee as a whole, as well as the superintendent, Jeff Zangy, and one of the things we talked about was assessment testing, and really, it was really a learning experience for us, more than anything else. We asked questions, and Mr. Zangy gave us the answers. We were questioning different assessment testing, like Galileo, like Dibbles, things like that. What's effective, what's not effective, and if it's not effective, why wasn't it effective? Was it simply something that didn't test a certain area that it was expected to? Was it something to do with the tester or the testees? So that was, that was very interesting. We also talked a lot about the middle school and the high school, and how a lot of the things that the problematics of being, you know, a mile apart now geographically are going to be done away with, being in the same, under the same roof, so to speak, and how not only are the students going to be assimilating quicker than they would now, but so are the teachers, and while the teachers are even now between the high school and the middle school exchanging ideas, so that when you leave the middle school and you're going up to the high school, there is a continuation, we have a stronger understanding of how that is gonna be a lot stronger in the next coming years, as teachers will be able to literally walk, you know, 150 feet to discuss something, whereas before you had to get into the car, or you had to get online, or you had to make a phone call to discuss the same things.
Thank you. Just to tag on to some of the things that were also put at that meeting, I think the superintendent and Mr. Zangy did a great job about talking about some of the exciting things that are gonna take place in the new building. One of the things that I really was excited to hear was on a pre-engineering program in our partnership that they're developing with WPI on Project Lead the Way?
Yes.
Which I think is gonna be a great program. Also, talking about integrated environmental technology programs, and I know those will all be in the minutes, but a lot of great work was done at that committee meeting, Mr. Deguio, and one of the issues that did come up that I just want to refer over to policy is that Mrs. Principay had brought up a question about our bump policy, and perhaps that we should take a look at our behavior policy. We haven't done so in a long time, so I would ask that that be referred to Mrs. Woodruff in policy, so that we can take a look at it, see if we need to tweak and get teachers and staff on board in looking at that, so, all right? So we'll refer that over to you, and with that, I'll change that to Mrs. Woodruff in policy.
Yes, I don't have any reports this evening, but I would like to set a date tonight in stone for our next policy subcommittee meeting to discuss the bump policy, and then we need to discuss kindergarten age, so hopefully I'll have that set tonight, and I will send that information and the agendas out to everyone once I have that date set tonight.
Okay, thank you. Budget facilities, transportation, Dr. Domenico?
No, no report, nothing scheduled at the time.
Thank you. Collective Vargan, Mr. Lozo?
No report at this time.
Building committee?
Building committee. Our next school building committee is Wednesday, April 25th, 2012, Hyman Room. The next tour is at, on April 21st, 2012, 9 o'clock in the morning. If you do not want to come to the town hall, we will have the forms on-site to eliminate a process. Mr. Chairman, I just want to enlighten the people that the realtors of the surrounding towns in Southbridge will be about 20 to 25 realtors touring on the 26th. Esprah will be touring 20 to 30 people, and we have Upward Bound, which is gonna be another tour of about 20 people. We've been touring small groups on Friday afternoon with department ads, townspeople, teachers, mostly teachers, and secretaries, guidance, whomever wants to make it. It's a small group tour of about four or five every week.
Can you give me an idea of when would be saved to take fifth graders through there?
Say that again?
When would be saved to take, like, fifth graders with their parents through there? Because I'm trying to think about when we might talk up about scheduling the fifth grade trip.
I think by the middle of April, at the next job meeting, when you and I go in, I think we're gonna see a big difference. I know the...
It looked better today when I was in there.
Yeah. The gymnasium is locked down, the cafeteria is in high gear, where it's to the point where they're in a terrazzo pouring, you're not gonna see parts of this building. So what we're doing is, we have safety barriers and issues such as open electrical panels, open heating systems. I think by the second week of April, as far as kids, it's very dangerous for kids. Adults, not a problem, but usually you have to let me know ahead of time on the small tours, because we keep them around five or six, so there isn't a big crew, because we don't have a lot of coverage. We do a big tour, what we do is Mr. Jovan, Mr. Bishop, sometimes the administration here. We volley back and forth on the tour, talking about technology, talking about different things in the building, but, yeah, I would say the second week of April is gonna be real safe. The gym will be open.
So if I start talking to him about it early May, we should be fine?
Oh, absolutely. I would just like to add that the gym has been barriered off, and I know that you saw the gym.
I did, I saw it today.
And I saw the gym today, and I had to come in today and tell some of the school committee members, it's absolutely breathtaking. I have not seen a gymnasium like this in my time on earth, and I just gotta say that the planning and development of this is gonna be a big pride thing when those doors open up. It's not just the auditorium, it's everything that's happening up there. It's state-of-the-art, and I think when you turn around and see our kids under a, in a stairwell, running a concession stand, it's gonna have a concession stand to make money for their class or their prom and stuff. I think it's just, I think the teachers, administration, and all the people have their fingerprints on this project have hammered it out. We continue to hammer it out, and we continue to have changes as we funnel everything into the June 18th completion date ballpark. I think we're, again, on time and under budget. I came out of a meeting today that, we have another budget meeting next week, but it's accelerating. I think John LaPerle and Cosigli are just an admirable company to deal with when there's a problem. I like this diet. We don't have problems, we just have solutions, and they knock it out. I know Terry and Eric can attest to that.
Or they just don't want to talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, there is no executive session tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor? Name is all present. Thank you, have a good evening.